Call the meeting order. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Here.
Mrs. Escalante?
Here.
Mr. Monk? Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Dr. McFadden had an issue at his office and he's still at office. Next to the table. Next on the agenda, our citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board. We ask that you come to the mic, announce your name and address. Be mindful that you have three minutes to address the board. Also be mindful that you may not receive a response back to your inquiries here this evening. And last, we ask that you address your comments to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Second call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, staff recognitions. Tonight, I would like to recognize and honor a certificate of recognition is hereby awarded to Cynthia...
Yeah, E. Course.
E. Course?
I. Course.
I. Course, a milestone achievement for reaching tenure in the Mount Clemens Community School District, given the 16th Day of May, 2018, Teresa G. Davis, CEO, CFO, or OC Rickman, School Board President. Congratulations. [applause]
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yay!
And also, certificate of recognition is hereby awarded to Brandy Croche, milestone, or is it Crochee?
It's Crogee, right? Yeah.
Crogee, just like Jim. Crogee, okay. Milestone of achievement for reaching a tenure in the Mount Clemens Community School District, given the 16th Day of May, 2018, OC Rickman, School Board President, Teresa G. Davis, CFO, CO, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations. And accepting her award on her behalf.
It's like the Academy Awards.
I got mine sent here a little wrong.
Thank you, congratulations on behalf of the board. Congratulations to these two fine educators for reaching tenure here in our school district. Next on the agenda, item six, approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting of April the 18th.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2018 regular meeting.
Support.
Support, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Let the minutes reflect. Trustee Monk is now present.
Sorry about me being late. I showed up at the high school again.
Trust me.
I don't see no cars out here.
Action item seven, bills for payment. The chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve the bills for payment.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Moved by Mr. Voorhees.
Support.
Support, Ms. Walker. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item eight, request for proposals. Item eight A, audit RFP. There were seven firms that participated in the process. The recommendation is to accept and award the bid from Ramon Robson LLC to serve as our next audit firm beginning with the fiscal year 2018-2019 fiscal year. Ms. Davis, is there anything else you'd like to add to?
No, basically, we did interview the, a couple of the audit firms and we were satisfied with, once we conducted the interview with Raymond and we had called some of their current and past clients. And they did have a really good record from Macomb County, so we're recommending that the board accepts that RFP.
Heard the explanation and the recommendation, the chair would entertain a motion. I move... Moved by Mr. Brewley to approve the recommendation for Raymond Robson LLC as our next audit firm beginning with the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Is there support?
Support.
Second by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, Mr. Brewley?
Yeah, we went over the bids in the committee meeting and found this one to be the most competitive, not the cheapest, but the most competitive. Our other accounting firm, which we've had for a while and we think has done an outstanding job, is from Saginaw and they're charging a little bit more. So we think it may be the fact that this is a closer geographical to us that may be the difference in the bidding process. We clearly wouldn't have changed because they provided us good service, but we thought that this, after the superintendent checked around, would provide equally good service and so we're going to try it this year.
Thank you for bringing that, Mr. Brewley, because I was going to just ask, what was the situation with Taylor and Morgan? They were the lowest bidder and we're not bound to the lowest, we're the lowest responsible bidder, we feel we do the best job.
Right. We didn't think that they had the capacity or the experience. Not that they wouldn't be good, but, you know, we didn't want to be the test.
Understood, yes, sir.
Yeah, that was just, I guess my, I guess I'm old school. I'm, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I'm like, why change?
Right.
We've been yelling yells for so long and they have given us exceptional service. So that was my question, why are we changing? I mean, was that, is it that significance of a dollar amount?
I guess it...
That's about $18,000 difference.
Yes. So, your and your bid at $83,000 and Raymond is at 65.
Okay. And you said they've done, have they audited schools like ours?
Yes, they have, I believe it's two districts that are in deficit that they are working with.
Are they, are they in the area of Macomb County?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I know they, from my banking experience, I know that they've done a number of smaller banks.
Oh, okay.
But I didn't know whether they have done municipalities or school districts.
They've, they've worked in school districts and right now, I believe, most of their clients, they have a huge number in this Grand Rapids area.
Okay.
And they have quite a few throughout the tri-county area.
Okay.
I believe we'll be, right now, we'll probably be number four in Macomb. They used to do quite a few districts.
Okay.
In Macomb.
Where is their office located?
Let me see, I believe the closest one to us is in Troy.
Troy.
The big, the big office is in Troy.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item eight A, excuse me, item eight B, student transportation. There were two transportation companies participated in the process. The recommendation is to accept and award the bid from Trinity Transportation to transfer students beginning the fiscal year, school year 2018-2019. Ms. Davis?
Yes, we did have four companies to come out and start the process, but only two submitted their bids. And one is from Ohio and they do a little bit of transportation in the state of Michigan, but not much. And then Trinity. And they are working diligently with us this year and they've changed quite a few things. And there are a number of things that they are going to change that's in the contract for the following year that they would abide by. And one big thing that we wanted to make sure was that the school district's name was on the outside of the buses, that that would be the prominent thing on the bus and then just operated by in the corner, like, and that's true in some other districts as well. So, that's why we're recommending, and they did have the same price that they used this current year, so they did not increase their price. So that's why we're recommending that we continue to work with Trinity.
The chair would entertain a motion. The bid, the recommendation, you've heard the explanation, is to award the bid for student transportation to Trinity Transportation to transport students beginning with school year, fiscal school year 2018-2019. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walker?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Are there any questions on the motion on the floor? Mr. Monk?
You know, have we really met with management from Trinity and really discussed some of the issues that we've had in the past with this bus company that has affected our children, our parents, but just overall operational of them running bus routes, them having substitute bus drivers and routes getting mixed up and the lack of communication and the lack of, you know, have we discussed all of that with this transportation so that we don't experience those things going forward?
Yes, we have had a sit-down conversation with two of the top executives at Trinity extensively and talked about even the substitute drivers. Unfortunately, as far as that goes, when people call in sick, they're in the same boat as most companies, you know, hard trying to find substitute drivers. So a lot of times the people in the office will come out and run the buses, so that's why sometimes you can't get a hold of anybody in the office because the director and the managers are on the route. And so it takes them a while to get back to answer the question, answer phone calls. But we did address that and that is why they did leave their price the same and that they will be providing newer buses and working more closely with staff. And so we're going to also try to work more closely with the parents because they have gone out of their way as far as when kids don't come outside on time and they'll double back. And they're not required to, but they have been doubling back to go pick up kids when they're left either at home or they missed the bus here at the buildings. So we are working closely with them to make some improvements so that children are at school on time.
Well, yeah, and just, I know we had, I don't know, my memory is losing me right now, I know we had at least two incidences where, you know, kids not being took home and dropped off and parents are frantic because they don't know where their child is and, you know, Trinity is a pretty big company. I mean, they got Detroit, they got, they got shuttle service down all over the state. We ain't talking about no small company. So even with them, and that's just my personal opinion, even if them saying they can't find drivers, how can you not find drivers, that big old company that you have? I mean, but, you know, it's just, you know, that's just, you get what I'm saying?
Right.
I mean, it's just that, it's just seemed that in the past, we've had situations where that, you know, and thank God it's never happened to me, but I can just only put myself in a parent's shoes where it's that my child don't show up and I wonder where my child is and I call the school and they don't know where they, you know what I'm saying? So I think those situations, we really need to dive in and say, hey, those can't happen. You know, some things, you know, you know, we got to have some type of non-negotiables, you know, those type of things cannot happen. You have to be on top of that stuff. You know what I'm saying? And your drivers need to know protocol. This happens, okay. Who to call, what to do, you never, you know, I'm just saying, so.
And, and you're right, it's always a bigger picture and also, there are very, a number of different divisions to Trinity, so...
Right.
Because they do have a lot of buses, but all of them do not drive for schools.
Right.
So they...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they're a pretty big company, they're all over, so.
So we just have to remember that drivers have to be vetted in order to drive for schools. So if they don't have the right credentialing, then some of them might not want to, you know, do the school route. But they are working through all of that and we've had, like I said, numerous discussions concerning that and I would, if we want to go into a little more detail later on to show you how all of that works out and what they've committed to for the coming year, we could gladly do that. But we are working closely with them and again, that's another reason why, after looking at everything and the two vendors, I think we're going to get better service as well from Trinity. But yes, we have had numerous conversations.
All right.
So thank you for bringing that up.
I have, I have verbally spoke to you about my concerns with Trinity. Number one, if they're going to put our name on the bus, and I'm glad that they are going to put the name on the bus, let's clean the bus, all right? I, I work in another community, Gross Point, they take care of Gross Point, and I look at the shiny, nice new buses that go around. And then I look at our faded buses that take our children. Our check clears as good as Gross Point's.
You're here.
So that's one of my concerns. The other is, in, I live on North Esplanade, which is right over here, at Hampton, four houses, three houses from Hampton. On occasion, the buses are going, the speed limit, I believe, in a, on a residential street is 25. I know that they're driving 40 and hit the brakes at Hampton. Now, if you're running at that close, are they, are they in some type of radio communication if they're running late?
I, yes, they are and they do have, they're trackers on the bus, so they know exactly where every bus is at every moment.
Okay. And I've expressed these views to you before, so I, I'm hoping that they were carried forward to Trinity and just, you know, that's, they're two small things, but perception is everything.
Absolutely. And I did review our last contracts that we had had with them, all of the prior ones, they all said 10 years old. So they said that they go by the contract, so, and we changed that this year, that no bus can be older than five years.
Good.
So...
Okay. I'm, if you're satisfied with it, I'm satisfied with it.
We're, we're all working together to make sure that everybody will be satisfied.
And that's fine.
So we are working through those.
I just have one, I guess it's an observation and it's a question. Their bid for three years is flat. There's not even anything for a fuel escalator. What did they, how did they present that as, you know, a flat three-year contract, I mean, flat three-year amount per contract? Because if you notice, the other bidder, they had about a $20,000 increase each year. Trinity was flat all three years. And my question is, were they aware, was that question ever raised? Because you don't want a contractor to not make his profit margin and not be happy because if you got an unhappy contractor, you're going to have less than stellar service.
Right.
Now you got a unhappy, you know, person who gave, who gave you the contract.
So I was just, my concern was about, what was their explanation about the flat bid?
But generally, in most districts, your, one reason that they will do increases is because your enrollment increases. We've had a steady decline in enrollment over the past at least 10 years. They took all of that into consideration, so they go by the number of riders as well and they know that they're estimating, just like we are, we're looking at a reduction in enrollment, so they're doing the same thing, a reduction in enrollment. So they took all of that into consideration, also the fact that they know that we have been in deficit for a number of years. So that is part of their contribution to Mount Clemens, to hold our costs at a minimum so that we can find ways to grow our district, so that is part of their contribution, that they want to help Mount Clemens Community Schools.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, action item on the agenda, item nine, MISD fiscal year 2018-2019 budget proposal. I think this was on the agenda last month.
Yes.
But it wasn't voted on?
Correct. And this is a formality?
Yeah, it's just formality. There's a resolution in your packets or on your devices on page 27. That, that's the approved, the proposed Macomb Intermediate School District budget. It's a, just a general resolution that each school district in the county, if they approve, well, whether they approve it or not, this is the resolution that the individual school districts send in to the ISD after the vote of, of their boards dealing with the ISD budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the resolutions for our review and approval of the proposed Macomb Intermediate School District budget.
It is moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve the resolution approving the MISD budget proposal for fiscal year 2018-2019 as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Brewley. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Seeing or hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item 10, informational item, millage renewal. Ms. Davis?
All righty. Again, with the, we were looking to go to the voters in November to re, to approve our 18 millages that is levied on businesses in the community. And this is just a format of the information and the steps that we will have to take in order to make that happen. So if there are any questions concerning the timeline and what we need to do, I can entertain those, but these were for information so we can start getting things in place.
This is, I think it's important that we convey to the community as often and as loudly as we can that this is a renewal, there's no new taxes. Taxes will not be increased by the renewal of this millage and this, what's up, 18 mills, it provides a lot of resources for us. And again, we need to flood the community with the word that this is no, no new dollars. It's just a basic renewal. Mr. Brewley?
I guess I'm a little confused. The millage we voted on last month, last meeting, right?
Yes.
And that's going on the August ballot, was my understanding. Am I, like having a flashback or something?
I thought it did too.
Yeah, I thought it was August, that's what I was told.
So, someone said November, I thought, I heard, maybe I'm wrong?
I thought, okay, go. I know we talked about the August and then I thought from the conversations and looking at everything that the best time to do it was the November.
No, I thought we voted, we voted to place it on August.
August.
Yeah, we voted place on August. With this memo from turn is just about the general election in November, when we elect school board members. So that's what that memo, so I just want to make sure we're on target, that we've turned in the paperwork for August.
I'll double check with him and make sure which date that he said, but I was...
Well, it's, it's item 10 on the minutes, moved by member Voorhees, seconded by member Walker to approve the millage renewal proposal for 18.227 mills in the August primary election.
Okay, well, I missed, we got this one wrong there.
This is a general, informational item for school board members election.
I forget, I forget that you guys have...
One had nothing to do with the other, and I mistakenly said it.
Yeah, okay.
Let me ask, do the, this paperwork, you know elections better than anybody, does the paperwork need to be into the, into the clerk?
To the clerk.
Submitted to the county clerk, I think.
So it goes up, so it gets printed?
Right.
There's a timeline that you have to edit in.
Okay.
So I would just tomorrow morning check and make sure that we submitted, I don't think we're too late yet even, but that we've submitted it for the August primary election.
Joey?
Thank you for that, Mr. Brewley.
And we have three seats, right? We have three seats up, right? We have three seats?
Yes, there are three seats up and, three seats, there'll be three seats up in November. Any other questions regarding informational items, number questions or clarifications for the millage renewal? Item 11, April 2018 financial reports. Any questions on that informational report? Mr. Brooklyn, sorry.
Um, I don't, do we need a motion to accept?
No, it's the informational item.
Okay, just, well, we went over it all in the committee meeting and I, thanks to the work of all the people in the school district, we're on target. It's a very difficult year. We started the year with fewer students, we had to reduce a number of things, but yet people have come through and spending is in line with what we hope for, if not even a little bit better. So I, for one, want to say I appreciate it. We want to get out of debt as soon as possible, we're on our way. It isn't as fast as we would like, but everything seemed to be coming in very well.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the financial report? Item 12, open purchase order listing. Any questions? Item 13, contract listings. Item 13A, request for proposals.
And, and the only reason that is on there is because that, that listing will be updated next month.
Okay, got you.
So, but that will be the change for the coming month.
Turn to the contractors.
Yes.
Item 14, superintendent's comments. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. Have a few things that we want to reiterate, looking at the calendar of events this coming month, we want to say congratulations to our seniors. At our next board meeting, they would have graduated and so the graduation... And so the graduation is on June the second, so Saturday at noon, and we're so proud of our seniors for the hard work that they've put in over the years. Let's see, so that's June the second on, see, we have the Friday lock-in, senior lock-in, and that's on the eighteenth. On Tuesday, the twenty-second is the seniors' trip. On Friday, May twenty-fifth is the junior senior prom. So I know everyone's looking, the young folks are looking forward to that. And then also on the thirty-first of May, the senior cap and gown pickup and rehearsals, I want to make sure that the seniors are aware and the families are aware that that's the day that this, that the students will be picking up their caps and gowns. And then, like I said, graduation is on June the second, Saturday at noon. Want to recognize the students that were in the top five for the breakfast that we had on this past Tuesday. It was very well attended. We have outstanding students. And our top five, let's see, we have Janay Phelps, Brianna Hadley, Marcellus Cruz, Tyler Ingraham, and Katatira Weaver. Just want to say congratulations to the Fab Five, to those young seniors that put in a lot of hard work to make sure that they had outstanding GPAs. So congratulations to them. Our valedictorian is Janay Phelps. She was also invited to the youth appreciation breakfast that was held on Wednesday, May the second, and the Optimus Club put that on, it was the Clinton area Optimus Club, and they recognized the students at all of the school districts in the county. So we want to congratulate Janay for that. We had four students, as a matter of fact, it was Jaleel Ek, who's, we had Ashley Nelson, Edwina Nelson, Shana, I'm sorry, that was the parent, Mrs. Nelson's parent, Shane Thomas, his mom is Shanna Thomas. And so we just want to say congratulations to those students that were awarded, honored at that breakfast. Also, on April twenty-fifth, we, there was an all-academic banquet, and that was held, let's see, I forgot the name of the, the location. But anyway, they honored Janay Phelps there, and her father came out and supported her along with Mr. Joe Gibson. And so that was a really nice event for her on that one. Let's see, let's see. Again, congratulations to our tenured teachers, Brandy...
Croce.
How does she pronounce it?
Croce.
Croce, because it was Peterson, I remember that, but, okay, Croce, congratulations. And also Cynthia Icort, congratulations to those two teachers. Well, I want to recognize Dave Brown, he's retiring after nineteen years in the district. It was effective May the ninth. He was our music teacher here at Seminole, so we just want to say thank you for the service that Mr. Brown rendered to the district over the nineteen years. Also for, we recognize Teacher Appreciation Week, we, and as each of you will see in front of your podiums, in front of your tables, that you have the, a sample of what the teachers got. And it was just saying thank you for the hard work that they put in. And with that, we did have a raffle, there were five raffles that we had handed, gave out. So each one got a ticket and we raffled off, it was twenty-five dollar gift cards, I believe. Also with the clerical staff, they received a ten dollar gift card, five of those, and then the administrators wanted to say thank you for your work in education, and they also received a gift card. Okay. Our raffle winners were Tim Nelson, Rayvon Martin, Brittany Coomer, Christie Borton, Ann Thomas Hendrickson, and Patty Montgomery. So congratulations to those teachers on the raffle. Okay, let's see. Also, you also have a sample of, or the annual education report from Seminole that was sent out to the parents, so that should be in your packet. Okay. And one other thing, I'm sure you've heard that it's on the ballot to legalize marijuana and the real impact that it's going to have on our students. So there will be, let's see, it's a conference that will be held, and it's registration information for you, and that, and that's on Friday, June the first, from nine a.m. to one thirty p.m. So you have information if you want to, board members want to attend that. Okay, the ACE Summer Camp. Should have information concerning the summer camp that the district will be having this summer in co, in conjunction with summer school. We're making it a full day this year of summer school, so students that are invited to summer school will continue their day. They'll have the academics in the morning, and then the camp in the afternoon, so breakfast, lunch, and, and lunch will be served for those. And it's all about a team-building activities, leadership and arts curriculum, activities to promote social skills, time to relax, play, and make friends, of course. And then we have a four-H indoor/outdoor activities, also steam-related activities, and weekly field trips. So we want our parents to know that students that will be participating in summer school will be invited to join ACE. So transportation will be first thing in the morning and in the afternoon. And I think it ends at, yeah, it ends at four, so the buses will be taking students home at four. So there will be no midday transportation, because it's going to be a full-day program. If parents wanted to pick their kids up at noon, right after the academic portion, they will come and get them, otherwise, and look forward to a full day of summer camp, with academics in the a.m. and summer camp in the afternoon. So more to come on that. And ACE, of course, stands for Actions Change Everything, A.C.E. Okay, let's see. Just wanted to remind the community that we will have developmental kindergarten program in the fall, and there will be more coming on that. We are excited about having extended kindergarten program, because some students aren't totally ready for kindergarten when they come in in the fall, so we're giving them another opportunity to develop those skills, so they will be ready for first grade. So more will be coming on that. And, and then just wanted to remind the board members that we are planning to have a board workshop on May the twenty-ninth at six-thirty p.m. at MISD in room two oh six. So check your calendars, and hopefully everybody will be able to attend that. Then the holiday weekend is coming up, so I'm hoping that everyone will have a safe and wonderful, relaxing, memorial, yeah, Memorial Day weekend, I always have to think about it, Labor Day, Memorial Day weekend, and just enjoy some relaxing time. And that is it for superintendent announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Item fifteen, committee reports, business report, business committee, I should say. Ms. Walker?
Uh, we had a meeting on Tuesday, May eighth. With me were, were Mr. Brewley, Ms. Escalante, and Ms. Davis. We covered everything that we voted on tonight, the financial report, payment of bills, purchase order listings, RFPs, contract listings, facilities update, we found everything to be in order. So our meeting was adjourned to eleven forty-five.
Thank you. Any questions on the chair? Thank you, Ms. Walker. Policy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to say thank you to my policy committee members, we have been busy since our last board meeting, I think we've met four times? Three times, three times. We met on...
It seems like four.
Right. We met on four-eleven, and then we also met on April twenty-third. One, we've, we have some upcoming policies for the next, we'll bring the first reading for the next board meeting, a slew of policies, some are deleted, most of those will be because of state, federal law requirement changes, wording. We also have been reviewing policies. We have reviewed all of the zero-one-hundred policies. We're currently on our one-thousand policies. I've been doing my midnight reading, I do apologize for my three a.m. emails to you guys. And we have been reviewing policies in, in, in light of the incident that happened. And with that, I'm going to read a statement. In the quest of the policy committee to review and update all of the district policies and procedures, it has become apparent that we have, that, that, it has become apparent that we as a board must ensure to our community that we will ensure that all policies are, all policies will be followed and enforced. Policies and procedures are the foundation of operating this district as in any company as well. In light of the recent situation that happened in the downtown business district, we must hold all of our students and their parents accountable for conducting themselves in a professional manner. The committee reviewed all policies that pertain to the action leading up to it, up to the embarrassing conduct of one of our parents and students involved. Make no mistake, we as a board must be united and making sure that policies, all of them, are followed and implemented. Poor attendance and poor academic performance leads to behavior issues in and out of the classroom. At our last meeting with the superintendent, we will bring to the full board some revisions of some current policies, but for the most part, we do not need, and I repeat, we do not need to reinvent the wheel, but ensure that all policies that we currently have on the books are being followed and implemented by the superintendent and her staff. Parents will send their kids to schools where their child feels safe, will get a good education, and be, and I highlight, a structured, healthy environment. You can never totally eradicate bad behavior, but when policies are being enforced, it will maintain this, it will maintain this unwelcoming behavior in this district to a minimum. And those are my comments for the policy committee.
Any questions on the chair? Thank you, Mr. Monk. Community Coalition, Mr. Lennanberry.
Good evening, Board. We've had two events since our last school board meeting. We had our drug take-back day on the twenty-eighth at Wilson Gym. I am proud to announce we more than exceeded our goal of twenty pounds of unused pills. We probably had that by ten-thirty, eleven o'clock in the morning. I was happy to drop off some unused chemotherapy, which I will no longer be needing. We also had our career day on Friday. I, it turned out the kids seemed to enjoy it, there was, they were positive, there was room to move and room to talk with all the vendors that we had, we had entrepreneurs, store owners, and we had some colleges as well. We had the sophomores go through, then the juniors, and then the seniors, so each had their own time to go through. It was very well organized, the traffic flow was nice, the response back from all the vendors that we had so far is very positive, we want to do it again, so we're really happy with how that went. We'll be meeting on Wednesday at the Media Center at three o'clock. Our coalition is growing, we're happy. We're got about twelve to fifteen regular members that are attending our meetings now, which is from about four or five a year ago, so we're very, very encouraged by the participation that we're getting from our coalition, so good news.
Thank you, Mr. Lennanberry. Any questions, Mr. Lennanberry?
Just, just one, Patrick. I think we were, at some point in time, we were talking about the members of your cable commission?
Yes.
And I know that's not under this, but you're part of it. Were you able to get a few more members, so that you have a, at least can get a quorum?
We've asked several residents if they were interested, and they haven't gotten to say all of the application yet, so we're still hoping, you know, we're still working it, we have to, you know, we need, we're down four members, I only have three out of seven on my commission right now.
Okay.
We don't even have more right now at this point. So we're working, if you don't even, you know, it's only, it's every other month, so it's not a very large commitment whatsoever. We meet, I guess, bi-monthly, our meetings are maybe an hour, hour and a half, at the most, most of the time it's just chatting and catching up, but we do. But, so yeah, if you know anybody that wants some kind of interest and some kind, you know, wants to give back in some way and volunteer, cable commission's a very easy way to get involved, you're involved in an award-winning program, so it's a easy, you know, simply easy way to give back. Any feedback you guys have on that, so?
Thanks, thanks, Patrick.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Lennanberry. Legislative report, I have no report. Curriculum personnel. Is anybody on the committee that was at a meeting?
We, we had curriculum personnel. We didn't have so much of a curriculum report, because the curriculum director was sick that day, so I hope you're better. And, but what I would like to do is see this particular report be the focus of the, our next meeting. We did have a number of personnel issues come before us, which I think helped precipitate the workshop we're going to have.
Any questions, Mr. Brewley? Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Athletics, there was no meeting. Educational foundation commitment, I inquired from the senior members of that committee. When we'd have a meeting, they would say, they'd say sometime before the graduation, but their strategy was to contact the cable channel and the building principal to let them advertise with the seniors, the, the local grants, scholarships that the graduating seniors, seniors could apply for. Hopefully, we got some takers on those applications for, for the money. So I'll have a more detailed report next month after we meet. Board comments, I will start with Ms. Escalante tonight.
You started with me last time.
How'd you remember?
I don't know, I'm just making it up, maybe you didn't. It's been, it's been a busy week, it's been a good week. I think we're all happy that spring is finally here, to stay, hopefully. Tuesday was a great day, I was able to be at the honors breakfast with several of my colleagues, and I was so proud, I mean, I'm always proud to be a bather, but I was extra proud this year. It was very well attended, it was beautifully done, and the bacon was delicious. It was like, it was like expensive bacon, I know, it was like long, it was so good.
It was.
It wasn't it, right? I know, everything, the food was delicious, I mean, they really put on a nice breakfast for these seniors, and they deserved it. And I just wanted to say that they're, they were there and they were honored because they worked hard to get there. They didn't get there by, by chance or by luck. They earned every bit of the scholarships and the cords, everything that they took, you know, home with them that day, they earned it, and I'm really, really proud of them. And I know sometimes I've heard in the past, you know, people say, oh, that's all that's graduating, it's only this many. That bothers me, because it doesn't matter if it's five kids or if it's five hundred kids, the fact that they're graduating and they're going on to do something great in this world is a huge accomplishment, so good job to you guys, I'm really proud of you. I think that's all I have to say. So once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante.
Thank you.
Mr. Brewley?
I, as I mentioned before, I think that the finances are in better shape than I hope, that we may have decent little surplus at the end of the year, which wasn't perceived in last September. So hopefully, if things continue along that path, we'll make another down payment on a better future. I really hope we can do that, so we can expand our offerings to our students. I think that they deserve the best, and we need to figure out more inventive ways to give them those chances that we can. So I appreciate what the staff is doing, I know... I know that it's stressful, number one. I also know that our kids come with certain issues that other places have less of. But I don't think that entitles us not to do better, but it entitles us to try and figure it out in a different kind of way. And so I would be very open to hearing from the staff about proposals, about how we can improve, especially with attendance. I'm, I'm still very concerned with the attendance issue. I haven't had yet a report and I would like to see our principals and our teachers give us very specific suggestions about how we can improve attendance because I understand totally that if the child isn't there, there can be no expectation of them achieving any better. And I know attendance is a big problem and I think it's one that we need to focus on much more than we have in the past. And so I would appreciate from the staff more very specific, doable kinds of proposals to increase attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President. To piggyback off of what Mr. Brewley just said as far as attendance, you know, that's one of the things at our last policy meeting that we really stressed. Based on the attendance report that we got, and we thank the superintendent for getting that information to us, we have an issue with attendance, you know? And I want to say to the parents out there, if your kids are not in school, how can they get taught? How can they learn? I guarantee you, if you get your kids to school on time every day, they will receive a quality, good, free, free education. But we must do our part in this, well, I just said when I made my, my comments on the policy, we must do our part as far as policy. We gotta hold our parents and hold our kids accountable to attendance. We have policies that are on the books that we need to enforce. Yes, are there gonna be circumstances where a kid may not make it to school one day here and there? Yes. Sick, family issue, family emergency, got it. But students being late first hour, second hour, third hour, on a regular basis, that's unacceptable. And that should be unacceptable to every member of this board because we are here to educate children. It's a parent's responsibility to get their kids to school. It's our responsibility as a board to provide public transportation because we're a public entity. So we're gonna provide that public transportation and, and, and helping that parent to get their child to school, but we can't give you a wake-up call, we can't knock on the door of the bedroom and say, get up Johnny, you gotta get to school. That's a parent's job. But if you, I guarantee you, if you get your kids to school on time, we have a staff willing, able, ready, trained, prepared to give your child a free, good education. I want to apologize for my dress, I don't have my fancy socks on today because I work midnight now, so after I leave the board meeting, I'm going to, uh-
I got you, I got you covered.
Ah, there you go. Yeah, I just got tired in with the auto workers, so I've worked midnight, which is great because that allows me to golf a little bit more, too. But because of that, I got held over yesterday and for the first time since I've been on this board, I missed the honors breakfast yesterday and I was kinda mad at my supervisor, but I can't be too mad because I ain't got my ninety days in yet, so I kinda kept quiet. But I know, you know, it sounds like it was a great event. I want to say congratulations to the Fab Five, but I want to say congratulations to the whole entire graduating class, you know, as to what Ms. Escalante said. Yeah, they say we only graduating so many, but if you look at the percentage, our percentage is the same percentage as in Clintondale, same percentage as in Chippewa because of the number of students. The number of students they got, our percentage is up there. So if you look at our percentage based on what we, the amount of students we have, our percentage is good as far as graduation rate. So don't get too hung up on the numbers, but we're, we're graduating kids and that's what's most important. ACE Summer Camp, you know, this is a great idea, hopefully we can put things together. And we also talked that, and I ain't gonna be long-winded, Mr. President, I know you over there looking at me. You know, we talked about, we really dug into, you know, and the superintendent is on a good track, her and her staff. She's, she's kinda reviewing outside and we said that we have to think outside the box. But, you know, making sure that we're offering before and after-school programs, summer programs, that's gonna really help as far as our overall teaching environment and, you know, all the camps and stuff that we offer, you know, I just, you know, hope that the teachers take, I mean, the parents take advantage of that. And I just wanna say thank you to the staff, to all our buildings, everybody that's under the superintendent tutelage, thank you to the superintendent. Let's finish strong this year. With that, I'm gonna finish with what I always finish with, good, better, best. Never rest until your good is better, better than your best. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Mr. Voorhees.
Well, this is, this is hard to follow. But I want to also echo the events for the honors and awards as an outstanding, first-class presentation. I look forward to this every year. I certainly realize that these students have worked very, very hard to, to get to be either the Fab Five or everybody who's listed on here. But it's kind of a triangle. It's the student, the parent and the teacher that brings this to fruition. And for thirteen years, these students were in our system. And this is, the graduation is just a culmination of those efforts. So Mary, I want you to make sure that everybody that falls under your leadership knows that we appreciate everything that they do and this is the end result. Maybe the, the following end result will be on next, on Saturday, the-
Second.
The second, when they, when we graduate our students. I was very proud. We certainly had a, a great event. The food was excellent. I stepped on the scale this morning and realized how excellent it really was. So Chartwell's did a great job, Ms. Carolyn makes sure that she knows that they do a great job. And with that, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Ms. Walker.
Well, I have to echo your sentiments. That was a lovely breakfast.
How was the bacon?
Those great scrambled eggs were outstanding. But it was a great event and congratulations to all of the students, whether you're graduating this year, whether you're moving on to the next grade, you deserve it, you're almost there. And, you know, tonight when I left, my little, the weather's nice, so my little dog is standing at the door because it's her nighttime walking thing. And I'm like, oh no, I'm going to a board meeting. And then I thought to myself, the kids here are worth, worth every minute of that. So every minute I spend here that I'm not walking Molly, poor unfortunate little thing, but every minute I spend here is worth it because the kids here are so worth it. So congratulations to, you know, finishing the year strong and moving on next year, you're worth every minute of this. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but I'm gonna sound like a broken record. Congratulations to the class of twenty eighteen, to the Fab Five, to the valedictorian, Janay Phelps. I know she worked very hard to obtain that. Ms. Brianna Hadley, I know she worked very hard to obtain this valedictorian. I've known, known both of those young ladies since they were about five or six years old. I know some of the challenges that they've had in their lifetimes and to see them to matriculate and come out at the top of their class is just outstanding. And that's just indicative of some of the students that we have here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. Some of them come from backgrounds that we couldn't even imagine and they make it to school and they do succeed and they do strive. So congratulations to the entire class of twenty eighteen. Like I said before, you're almost there. Don't mess up now. Don't mess up now. Prom is a great activity, have fun, but be safe. You'll see these cars on the highway were smashed up, drunk driving, they, they always put those cars out around prom time just to remind young people that, yeah, you have, you can have fun, but within reasons and moderation and you have to always be safe. So to our young people, be safe out there, whatever it is that you do. I must apologize for not being at the awards breakfast. I was scheduled to be on there and I thought I could make it, but I overbooked myself and I could not get out of the meeting that I was in to, to come over to attend the honors breakfast. I would not have eaten the bacon, but I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, I ate it for you.
I believe you, Mr. Voorhees, that you had to get on, you had to get on the scale. I would've took the fruit cup. But I know, I know, I know our staff that works with Chartwell did an outstanding job. I know the people who put together and organized the program did an outstanding job and it was all for the students.
Yes.
And that's what we're here for, as you said, we're here to educate students. It doesn't matter if it's five hundred or it's fifty, that's our responsibility to educate the students who come through the doors of our school system. I'd also like to give congratulations out to Janay Phelps. She was, I think she won first place in the Optimist Oratorical Contest. I don't remember the other names that were on the billboard as I was driving by, I couldn't, couldn't see the other names, but congratulations to her. I remember when she was scared to even talk. I mean, you, you know, you, you know, she was, when you, when you guys would see her back there on the cameras, you know, she was like, she was so shy and scared to talk. But, you know, to come out and just come out of her shell and come into her own and, and win that oratorical contest, I, I think that's amazing and congratulations. Let's see, what else was it? The board approved, a couple meetings ago, we approved to change the June meeting to the Tuesday, the third Tuesday of the month, to accommodate a, a conflict of interest, not a conflict of interest, but a scheduling conflict that the superintendent had. So just wanted to remind the board of that. And we have recently had a holiday, Mother's Day, and there are two colleagues on the board that are mothers and although it's late, on behalf of your colleagues on the board-
So sweet.
Happy Mother's Day.
Oh, so sweet. Oh, that was sweet.
Thank you for my birdhouse. I will put it up in the backyard and hopefully the squirrels don't destroy it. That's, you know, squirrels are terrible everything in my neighborhood, maybe yours too, but definitely mine. Our next meeting, we will be out of school, so I will say to those that watch this, enjoy your summer, enjoy your vacation, enjoy your time away from school, recharge, re-energize, have fun and we'll see, we'll look forward to seeing you back here in September fired up and ready to go. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Move by Mr. Monk?
Support.
Second by Ms. Walker. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries, means adjourned at seven thirty-five. Thank you.